Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, August 27, 2012. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Galloway-
Here.
Martin-
Here.
Piana-
Here.
Lennon-
Here.
Mayor Coulter-
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum; in fact, we have a full house tonight. Our next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway-
Yes.
Martin-
Yes.
Anna-
Yes.
Lennon-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on, we have two presentations this evening. Our first presentation is Peggy Snow with the August Beautification Awards. And you have a partner this evening. Wonderful.
This is Anna Garrett. She's been on the commission for about a year, and she's my vice chair. Years ago, I had a vice chair, but it's been a long time, and it's nice to have, if I can't make it to a meeting or something, then she could come in my place, so.
Great.
I'm happy to have her helping me.
Oh, come in, Anna.
Thank you. Good to be here.
My first award that I'm going to announce is a residential. It's Mark Queetry and Shane Lowell at 537 East Maplehurst, and they have a lovely little house with a nice, attractive front yard, and they were nominated by a friend, and you know I like to read what the friends write if it's nominated like that. They wrote, "Constant care and hard work have created an exceptionally well-maintained, visually appealing, display of plants and flowers, especially in the backyard." So we selected them for August. And my next one is Angela Fisher, and she lives at 169 West Maplehurst, and we spotted her during the parade when we walked down past her house. And we liked it because she had a little water display out front, and when we went together to talk with her, and she did all the landscaping herself, hauling rocks and everything, I mean, she put a lot of work. It's a very shady yard, but very, very pretty, and she did all the work herself, so it's very deserving.
Very nice.
And the other one is our Cone Flower Award, and that's Lisa and Michael Smith at 1454 West Troy. I remember Zinnia used to be the city flower, and then we had it changed about five years ago, and every year we tried to look for cone flowers for the award, and we spotted her. They're all across the front of her property.
Did we officially do that?
Yes.
Peggy, I know that was discussed. Is it now the official flower?
Almost about five years ago.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So anyway, but she's got like a picket fence. It's not the white one, but this one is a darker one. It blends in very nicely with her house, and all in front of it is cone flowers. Unfortunately, by the time she was nominated, we took the pictures, and all the weather, they were not looking that great. But we still gave her the award because, like I say, it was across the whole front of her property on the corner lot there, and we thought she was deserving of it. And then Anna spoke with the next two people. I'm going to let her mention them.
Thank you. This is a woman named Eleanor Melkey. She's an owner and resident in a four-unit apartment building at 565 West Breckenridge. Her landscape is just meticulously done. There are lots of mature shrubs, and they're just perfectly, there's not one little leaf out of place. The lawn looks gorgeous in spite of the climate we've been having, and although there aren't flower pots all around, she has these two huge, enormous lime-light hydrangeas that add a real pop of color to her place. She's probably watching this on TV, else she won't be here this evening. The second one that I talked to was a commercial establishment, and it's owned by Kaiser Sudan. He's an owner of Next Step Studios and Gallery at 530 Hilton, and his studio is connected to the house that he lives in, which kind of looks like a brownstone, but he has enclosed the parking lot between the studio and his house, and with a high wall, and that has become a real beautiful courtyard. I was privileged to see the inside of that, too. He has a lot of sculptures and really beautiful stuff. In front of these three structures, though, is a really lush garden. It has no grass, but it has a very huge amount of ornamental pear trees with very glossy leaves and maiden hair grass, or maiden grass. And those are the only things you see from the street, are those two things, and he doesn't have to water them at all because they are able to take care of themselves. Although they're mature, they, you know, probably the first couple of years he had to, but he doesn't have to deal with it anymore. So that's something to be looking forward to also.
And last week, I didn't ride around with them. I had to work that night. But last week, they rode around for the block award.
Yes.
And there had about 15 houses, or blocks were nominated, and they just ride around together in one or two cars, however many they need. And East Hazelhurst between Paxton and Hilton was selected, and the city, as always, will put a sign at either end of the yard, and we haven't picked a date yet, but we'll have our annual get-together there with them, and the city yard sends out a letter and lets them know about that. And then the next and last thing is the perennial exchange. We always have it the last Saturday of September, but unfortunately, somebody beat me to that date, and so I'm working with the Kulik Center now for September 22. I'm hoping to have it that date, but I'll come back and announce it again then. But I just want everybody to start picking out plants from their garden that they want to get rid of and start potting them up and having them ready, so.
Well, I need some cone flowers, apparently. I don't have any of those.
Oh, you do?
Well, apparently, I do.
Oh, good, come. I got some.
I have ferns. I guess I wouldn't need a cone flower now.
Oh, well, I got some I'm digging out, so.
All right.
Purple ones, so I'll send you some.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both. Our next presentation this evening is our DDA, and Chris Hughes is here to tell us all the happenings downtown.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Chris Hughes, Communications and Marketing Manager for the Ferndale DDA. So you're right, there's lots of stuff going on. I'm just going to get right to it. All the stuff you can find on downtownferndale.com, we'll start there, so if you get confused, you can't follow my bouncing ball, downtownferndale.com. First things first, this Wednesday, August 29, at 9:00 a.m., the Business Development Committee of the DDA will be hosting FerNet, a networking opportunity for downtown businesses. We'll be meeting at a really place you'll want to come to, Easy Like Sunday, at 172 West Nine Mile Road, and our subject will be Pinterest and how to create a board. We have a social media expert, Heather Coleman-Boss, who will be there, and she's going to tell businesses how to create boards, which are basically electronic scrap boards that will be the best for their business, and so it's a good opportunity to find out how to do that. Bring your laptops. The whole thing is free. We do have coffee for those of you who need it, and I'm sure the yogurt machines will be running, so come on down. September 13, 14, and 15, it'll be an art fair takeover that weekend with the DIY Street Fair and the Funky Ferndale Art Fair, both generously supported by the Motor City Casino Hotel. When these two shows come together, Downtown Ferndale becomes the host of one of the best art fair weekends in the entire state, and that's why we take the name Art Town and apply it liberally to our downtown. We actually think it's the best art show, but, you know. It's not only a great weekend for art and artisan lovers and art of every kind, but we've got all kinds of fun stuff for the kids to participate in, including a chance to make a piece of art that's going to be delivered and installed at the Heidelberg Project in downtown Detroit, and then we will also have a similar project installed here in Ferndale. So we're working on building good neighbor relationships, and we're excited to have our kids create something that's going to go to Detroit and something similar that will stay here. So come on down to downtown during art fair weekend. Things are going to get reel, R-E-E-L, when September's 3rd Thursday rolls around, and big screen outdoor movie viewing comes to our hometown downtown. We are still working out the kinks in the film on this, but be sure to save the date. It's September 20. We hope to be on Duster Street. It's going to be a blast. It's free. Stay tuned for details. Once again, downtownferndale.com. That night, if all goes well, we are also going to be introducing the top 10 finalists in the I-Downtown Ferndale contest. So if you haven't gotten your entries in, and I know all of you have, and I forgot your bumper stickers, but if you haven't gotten those in, send them in to us at info@downtownferndale.com. All we need are 30 seconds of how you downtown Ferndale. And for me, I am downtown Ferndaling right this minute, so it's that easy. So send it in, and the grand prize winner is going to get a gift basket to Downtown Ferndale, so it's definitely worth those 30 seconds. If all those events don't keep you in or bring you to our downtown, we're happy to say that we also have a whole lot of new businesses to keep the mix lively. This past summer has been hopping with new openings. Lily Dior Salon on Woodward, south of 9, PNA Scholar Beauty School on Woodward, north of 9, on Nine Mile. It's True Detroit, Easy Like Sunday, Blue Moon Vintage, Found Sound, and the all-new restaurant, Local, which is, I'm told, awesomely cool. Finally, we're happy to report that five more on-street bike wrecks will be going in sometime after Labor Day. They are in production, so that will eliminate, replace one car with 12 bikes. That's a pretty good ratio, so we're happy about that. And finally, don't forget to view the six state masterpieces that we have on hand here in Downtown Ferndale through the end of September. These are part of the Inside Out program. We are a lucky community to be selected for this. It's an honor to have them here. They're all around town. If you don't know where they are, once again, where do you go? Downtownferndale.com. We have maps that you can have. There's some maps in the back here for those who are here and want to see them, and of course, we've got 11 amazing sculptures all around town as part of Art Town the exhibit. And that's it. Enough?
Yeah, it's plenty.
Thank you very much.
As always, thank you.
Be sure to come downtown Ferndale.
Always, lots of things going on downtown. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. All right, our next item of business would be Call the Audience. Call the Audience is a half hour now, more time if we need it at the end of the meeting for anyone to come up and speak for three minutes on any topic they'd like. It's not on the agenda, because I would give you an opportunity to speak on that topic when we get to it on the agenda. So come on up, give us your name, your address if you're comfortable. If not, write your address on the back so the city clerk knows who you are. Anybody who would like to address the city council this evening, it's Call the Audience.
I'm Amy Butters, and I live at 23 Millington in Pleasant Ridge, and I'm here to introduce myself as a candidate for the school board election in this November. I'm proud to be the B in bold. I'm running with the three other candidates that are standing behind me. They're also going to introduce themselves, and we just wanted to come and just introduce ourselves to the council and to the community at large. The election is this November, and I wanted to let you know a little bit about how I was reminiscing a little bit today, because I was here with you, it's been a few months ago, I came to speak to the council on behalf of the Citizens for Quality Schools. At that time, I was helping with the campaign for the school bond election, which was in February, which passed, and we want to thank the council for your support in that election. And so that was the last time I was here speaking to you. Now I'm here speaking to you as a candidate for school board. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself. I have three kids in the schools, one going into middle school and two in elementary, and I'm really looking forward to the campaign, letting everyone know that we're going to be knocking on doors and talking to voters, and I'm looking forward to great conversations about our great school district that we have here in Ferndale. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Amy. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Council. My name is Jim O'Donnell. I'm the O in bold, and I live at 1326 West Hazelhurst here in Ferndale. I'm the parent of three kids that go to Ferndale Schools, one in the high school, one in the middle school, and one at Kennedy Elementary. And just briefly, I serve currently on the library board and also on the School District Operations Committee. I'm looking forward to engaging in the campaign in the fall and look forward to meeting Ferndale residents as we go door-to-door over the next few months, so thank you very much.
Awesome. Good to see you, Jim. Our former councilwoman, Kate Baker.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. I was supposed to be here before they got up, but I was delayed. I apologize. Meeting all of our new Wayne State students, which was a lot of fun down at work today. But as you've heard, we've got an exciting school board race coming up this year. This is the first time that Ferndale voters will see a school board race on their November ballot. This is a big change in Ferndale. We all know that we've got a big election coming up this November at the federal level and at the state level, so we also have some big things going on here at the local level. So voter turnout is hugely important. The candidates that I'm supporting, who you've just heard from, are going to be knocking on doors, they've already started talking to voters. They'll probably be at your doors sometime soon, so please welcome them and say hello. But also, for residents, please remember that you have local initiatives and local candidates on this ballot, so vote all the way to the end of your ballot. Don't just start at the top. It's a day-to-day, as we all know, me having been on council and you guys being up there, it's really a day-to-day job, working for the residents of our city. So our residents really need to be involved in selecting who works on their behalf. So that's it. Good to see you guys.
Good to see you.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Coulter and community members. My name is Raylon Leaks May. I'm also running for the school board. I've been a community member for about 20-plus years. I have five children, one age five, all the way up to the age of 25, and I'm very excited of working with the council. I'm very excited to work with the community. Again, you'll also be seeing me knocking on doors, and I just wanted the opportunity to introduce myself and say hello. Thank you.
Thanks for stopping by. Let me guess, you're the fourth letter in?
You can guess. I'm the one whose initial might be confused with a grade point average, which is unfortunate. But my name's Kevin Deegan-Cross. I live at 521 West Oak Ridge in Ferndale. I had the good fortune of being up in front of you many, many times in past years with regard to the library, and was thankful every time for the support of everybody up on that dais for the library. When we worked together as a team, we made the library into something where people come to instead of something where people flee from, and what we would like to see happen, myself and the other candidates, is that Ferndale Schools become the first-choice school district for all the residents. Nobody should have to make the decision about where they send their kids. The immediate first choice should be, I'm going to send them to Ferndale Schools. We're moving in that direction, but we can move a lot faster and a lot further, and that's what we're going to do. So thanks. You'll see me walking, knocking on doors, walking around and talking to people. I've already started, and I'm just thankful to the community for welcoming us as we make that effort. Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. Anyone else not running for school board, or running for school board, would like to address council this evening? Everyone's welcome. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Thanks, everybody. Our next order of business would be the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are normally things that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is pulled from the agenda by council. Let me take a moment to read the consent agenda this evening. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held August 13, 2012. Item B is the approval to appoint City Manager April Lynch as representative and DPW Supervisor Slocum as alternate to represent the city of Ferndale on the Board of Trustees of Sacra. C, approval of the Woodward Avenue Action Association annual dues in the amount of $3,125. D, approval to transfer the city's long-distance service to Century Link from AT&amp;T. E, approval of the demolition contract with Catalyst Management Group in an amount not to exceed $8,850 to demolish the structure at 3331 Harris, and authorization for the mayor to sign said contract. F, approval of the boiler and potable water service agreement with Chemco Products, Inc. in the amount of $3,025. That was submitted by the Recreation Director. G, approval to execute an agreement with SLC Meter Service, Inc., and accept funds for the meter credit owed in the amount of $33,685 to be credited to the Water and Sewer Fund. H, approval of the low bid of $425,637 from FTL Construction Company of Canton, Michigan to replace the water main on Bonner from Nine Mile Road South and Looping on Saratoga and from Bonner to Pharaoh and on Fielding between Libinoy and Kensington, and to charge those expenses to the Water and Sewer Fund. And finally, the approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee. What is the council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I would like to request removal of 6H water main replacement to the ward.
6H will be moved to the regular agenda. Any other removals from council? If not, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve the agenda as read excluding 6H. Remove that to the regular agenda.
Support. Moved by Lennon, supported by Galloway. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin-
Yes.
Piana-
Yes.
Lennon-
Yes.
Galloway-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda, as amended, is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item A, consideration of other post-employment benefits, investment policy, and I believe Jane Marie is here this week. This came up at our last meeting, but Jane Marie was out of town, and so we asked you to come and just explain a little bit to us the change in policy.
Well, this is actually new policy to address the OPEB funds. How we have been investing them in the past was under our general policy. In the 1998 policy, there was a provision that any new funds would be invested the same as that policy, but OPEBs actually, or OPEB funds actually fall under the same law that govern pension funds and investing for pension funds. So back in the good old days, when we could conservatively invest and still make our actuarially assumed rate of return, which is seven-and-a-half percent, those days are long gone, and the last of those investments have matured, and we've bought new investments, and we just can't make that actuarial rate anymore. So this policy was developed with the assistance of the legal team and investment managers at Comerica, who hold these funds for us, and with their help and in comparing to what our actuarial requirements are to make our future obligations for the OPEB funds, that's how the policy was developed. So I gave you a, as far as I could tell from the meeting and reviewing the meeting, the questions that came up, specifically, there was a question about safety and liquidity. Of course, anytime you invest, there is the possibility that you lose some of your principal, but what we invest in and the direction that we take from our investment counselors at Comerica, we try to compress as much as possible our losses, but the same as there is the possibility for losses in the pension funds, there are here. The timing of the policy, again, it wasn't as urgent because we were investing conservatively these funds and still making reasonable return on our investment. That isn't the case anymore. In fact, I got an email today from one of the banks that we invest with, and this is just an example about, you know, hurry, invest with us now because we'll give you a half a percent if you invest with us for the next year. While half a percent isn't a reasonable return based on our actuarial assumption, so we do want to move into stocks from the bonds that we currently have been investing in in this fund. Again, the development of the policy was with the assistance of Comerica Bank, who has held on to the funds since the OPEB fund was opened in 2001, and the allocation is slightly different than that of the pension funds, but not far out. I believe there's only about a 5% sway in what the two pension funds invest in. The suggestion for the OPEB funds are a little bit higher in stocks than bonds that the pension funds are, but very comparable.
Questions for Jane Marie.
How does the 1.2 volatility compare to the policy that previously governed these funds?
The, I'm sorry?
You've got a volatility parameter, a 1.2 versus the policy benchmark. In this policy, how does that compare to what it was previously governed by?
We didn't have one, because in the other policy, the goal of the policy is safety and liquidity, so there's virtually a no.
No volatility was in it.
Yeah. It's, the concern there is safety of principle, so you're only going to invest in, you know, passbook-type savings, bonds, where the returns are guaranteed by the government. For the most part, we had United States Treasuries in the OPEB funds, you know, Fannie Mae's, Jimmy Mae's, all backed by the U.S. government, so.
So on the pension boards, if we needed to shift the minimum or maximum of the fixed income or any of the allocations, for example, it would go to the pension board. In this fund of money now, who makes those decisions if there needs to be a shift in the policy? Does it have to come back to council then?
Yes, it does.
When was the last time this was presented for review to council?
Well, the OPEB funds have never had a separate policy. They went, as per the old investment policy from 1998, any new funds would fall under that policy. So OPEB funds fell under the 1998 policy. It's just really within the last couple of years, as some of our investments have matured, that we're not able to make that actuarially determined assumption anymore of seven-and-a-half percent.
So a review of the asset allocation or strategies within the OPEB funds have never actually been presented to council for review?
No.
And as described by this investment policy, the investment manager, I assume that's Comerica Bank, is responsible for the selection and termination of securities on an ongoing basis and has full investment discretion with regard to security selection. Are you comfortable with that alone? We have, of course, oversight, you know, from people who are involved and representatives of council for pleasing fire pension fund, and what's your opinion on that?
Well, Comerica would be acting in the same role that Loomis does now, and it's actually an arm of Comerica. The World Asset Management Fund is actually a separate body from Comerica, intertwined, yet it's a separate board, and they would be acting in that same role as Loomis, where they're making the direction, you know, I'm overseeing it as the board would oversee it, just like I've overseen this fund for the last 12 years, except I was making the direct investments. This pulls me out of the direct relationship because, you know, what I was investing in before were, for the most part, governmental instruments, some CDs, but generally governmental instruments. This puts it in the hands of Comerica, who are more experienced in stock selection and investing than I would be on a daily basis.
And I think that's fine and appropriate, and perhaps more direct council oversight wasn't necessary, and I don't think it probably was, when we're investing in treasuries at very stable, very predictable rates of return that are safe. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with giving a bank complete discretion with regard to this fund with no effective oversight by council. You know, when Loomis invests, they report to us quarterly, and we have George Vida Investment Strategies sort of interpreting what they're doing and giving us a second Do you believe something like that is appropriate, to set up a new commission to review these OPEB returns on a quarterly basis and employ someone such as George Vida there?
I would probably be the one on the board that questions whether we need the services of George Vida, whether that is in a duplication of effort and expense, so I would tend to say no. That really would be, under this policy, it would be my role to oversee what Comerica does. I'll be getting reports monthly, as I do now, to the extent that situations change and investment returns change. I have done that for the last 12 years, made changes to the investments because of policies or because of, returns have changed, investment market conditions have changed. Could we create, I mean, we have the Could we create, I mean, we have the finance committee of the council, could we have them review it as well, and would that be appropriate, you know, if that's what council wishes? That, you know, that would be totally appropriate.
Without being too critical of your abilities, Jane Marie, I mean, you've said that you don't really have any experience in picking securities and reviewing this kind of stuff.
I have about 30 years' experience in that. I did this before. I came here, so I have actually a lot of experience in it. But to do it every day, my job has changed over the last three years dramatically with the taking on the treasury role as a full-time job. So do I have the time to do what I used to do before? You know, no, I don't.
Well, so how are you gonna, I mean, I thought you said you weren't comfortable with evaluating equities and, you know, and securities other than treasuries.
I'm comfortable with that. It's just, it takes time that I don't have over the last three years. I just, I don't have with the change in the finance office that the full-time operation of treasury is now mine.
Well, I understand that, and I guess what I'm getting at is, this investment strategy is a significant jump up in complexity rather than buying, you know, securities that are fixed rates, or treasuries that are fixed rates of return or CDs. You know, there's things as far as asset allocation within these, you know, costs and how these things are loaded, and it just seems to me that it's quite a bit more complicated, and it's going to take a significant amount of your time to monitor this and report to council on what your findings are.
Well, that would be the role of Comerica, is actually doing individual selections that, actually, that's what I did when I first started here on both pension boards, is reviewed and made all the selections. So that's probably changed maybe within the last 10 years, where I didn't pick every individual one or oversee every selection in tandem with Loomis.
Well, I guess I, for one, am not comfortable with having this policy say that we have ultimate fiduciary responsibility without some mechanism being set in place for us to oversee how this is being invested. I'm comfortable with staff assisting us in that role, but there has to be some mechanism to regularly report out to council, and perhaps after we get a feel for it, decide whether or not we need an investment advisor in addition to Comerica. You know, I don't have any expertise in what an appropriate fee is or how we should plan, and certainly, investing millions of dollars for an institution is much different than individuals, so I'd like to see something set up.
I share your concern over the lack of control, and it's not a reflection of your ability, but this is significantly, in my mind, more risk than we've taken with this fund in the past. And our motives to do so may be correct, but it's also kind of a different role for council to sit in as well. Whether we need another subbody to help govern this overall, I'm not sure. The policy currently requires that a report comes to the city manager and to council quarterly. I would suggest that perhaps, at least initially, it's reasonable that we ask for a report on the performance of the fund, and not only monthly, but require the policy to come back and revalidate the allocation and the risk model in a regular basis, perhaps for the first year we look at it every quarter and make sure we're comfortable with it, just as we do with the pension board.
And I think something more than just getting a report put into our PAC, it's as appropriate, I think we need to have a presentation by whoever the representative of Comerica is, the same way as Sauerby comes down here and addresses us. And if that person's a great communicator and can explain what they're doing, and you can give insight as to what the fee structure is and how that's, you know, detracting from our returns, then perhaps we don't need, and whether, you know, what your perspective is on the market and comparables and benchmarks and all that, then perhaps we don't need someone else. But I guess I'm not comfortable just having Comerica assure me that everything is okay without at least demonstrating it to us. So I think the finance committee could do that. I think, you know, we could explain, I don't know, the charter probably covers the police and fire pension boards, we may can't wrap that into that, but I don't know, maybe the manager could make a recommendation as to what would be most appropriate on that, but I'd like to see something.
I think if I, I would agree, and I'd add one more piece on page three, where we talk about that, for the overall investment strategy, again, the way that this is written, you would choose the securities and/or the actual investment managers within the policy guidelines. And I think a more legislative body approach to that might be appropriate within the policy as well. Again, it's for our overall protection because we are talking about more risk here than we've taken with this fund in the past.
And I'm sorry, if I could direct a question to Dan. Are you suggesting that we bid out the investment advisor or look around, or exactly what did you mean by that?
No, but what I would suggest, that when we talk about the selection of the investment manager, that it not be the decision of one person within the governmental body to do so, that we either have the finance committee, or it would come back to council, or however long-term we feel comfortable with this. I think we have to take this in steps because, again, you know, and I think you and I agree on this, it's a much more, we're putting ourselves at a little more risk and hopefully to get better returns, and I think we need to be careful about the oversight. So those are the components between that, requiring the policy to come back on a regular basis, that we validate the volatility ratios and allocations, and possibly have the finance committee or someone else step in, would all be reasonable controls to accompany this new approach.
Well, I, and I'll just say, I share your desire to have more oversight, and so I'm wondering, since these are fairly significant changes to this policy, if we shouldn't, once again, maybe have, kick this back to you for a recommendation on some possible structures that would be appropriate to address this concern?
Yes, I would be happy to look and research some options and kind of come back with some recommendations on how we can proceed further. I would ask that if you table it, if you could not put a date on it, so it gives us some time to make sure that we can bring back, bring back appropriate recommendations, but I don't see a problem with that at all.
Are there, so that issue seems pretty clear. Are there other issues that she and Jane Marie should think about while they're taking the time to do that, or was that the gist of it?
It sounds like the oversight, more of structured oversight is what we're looking at, especially as this fund grows, which it will continue to grow, that is quite a bit of money. And so what I'm hearing is somewhat of the same protection that we offer both of our pension funds.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Counsel amenable to that? All right, then let's postpone this to a date uncertain. Jane Marie, bring that up to us. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane Marie, appreciate it. Item B then is consideration of a contract with OHM for an interim DPW director. And city manager, do you want to introduce that item?
As many have heard, Byron Thaides has retired after 39 years with the city, and with that brought a lot of changes to that department. And so what we've done, as I have, I've been working with OHM, which is an engineering firm out of Livonia, to contract with them to handle the DPW interim duties for at least the next 90 days as we take the time to recruit a new DPW director, which, as we know, is a huge part of the services we provide to our residents. We want to make sure and ensure that we have whoever that new person is, is somebody that fits in with our community and that we have the right person. So that's why I felt it was important to get an interim director in to help the crew that's over there with this transition. So with that, I have two people I'd like to introduce, if you could both stand up and come to the podium, please, that would be great. The first person I want to introduce is Bill Kostick. He is part of OHM and has actually brought me the recommendation of the next person I'm introducing, which is Lloyd Currington. And I want to talk just a little bit about, Bill Kostick is a retired city manager from Farmington Hills and has been working with OHM for about 12 years, working in various different capacities with OHM, in particular, very familiar with DPW functions. So he will be a support staff to Lloyd Currington, who will be our daily interim director. He comes to us with over 25 years' experience of DPW director, time with, I think, Walt Lake for quite some time, as well as some other projects with OHM. So we are very excited to have both of them here, but Lloyd will be the one you will see here at all of our meetings and will see daily throughout the city, helping out with the functions of the DPW department. So Lloyd, I don't know if you want to say a few things, or Bill, but we're happy to have you and happy to introduce you.
Just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to serve the city, and I look forward to working with you. I'm sure I'll have more to report as meetings go on in the future, but, you know, I do thank you for the opportunity.
Tell us just a little bit about your background, where you're from and all that.
Over 20 years' experience, the city of Walt Lake as a DPW director and other capacities, a smaller city but a wider range of responsibility, pretty much was involved with, you know, everything except for police and fire, and sometimes lent a hand there, too. So, you know, I enjoy public service, and, you know, I've had an opportunity to not see every part of Ferndale, but I've been around the last few days and worked with some of your personnel, and I'm very impressed. You know, it's a great city, you know, and I wish I had discovered it sooner. You know, I've been through and been at the tree cruise a few years ago, but the vibrant community that you have, particularly the business district, is a great asset. And so, you know, I look forward to doing my part and helping continue that, so, thank you.
Well, flattery will get you everywhere. Thank you. And Bill, thanks for helping locate this guy, and you want to introduce yourself?
Yep, Bill Kostick, I'm with Orchard Hills MacLym. Formerly was a principal until I partially retired. But we have a lot of years combined of public works experience between us, and I can tell you that Lloyd's enthused about this opportunity, which has stolen him out of retirement, and he's too young to retire. But last Monday, April took us over and introduced us to the men and women at the public works department. We sat down with them for about a half hour, had a discussion, and then met later with the supervisors. Lloyd has been working closely with them ever since. I think things are going pretty well, and we've been received warmly, and over the next month or two or three, hopefully, we can do some proper analysis for some things that might want to be improved upon, and we're pleased to have this opportunity. We've done public works interim directorships over the past five or six years in Livonia, Romulus, Ypsilanti, so we've had a, and a number of studies of public works operations. So it's kind of a specialty that our firm has developed. So we thank you for this opportunity and look forward to working with you.
Thanks.
And answer any questions if you have them, so.
Questions of council or comments?
What you do have before you is to, you have the contract with OHM for the next 90 days as we do recruitment, but also the request to move forward with filling that position permanently.
One thing I would mention, Bill touched on it briefly, is that not only are we bringing on Lloyd for 90 days, but we're going to use this opportunity like we would in any department, to reevaluate our policies and procedures and how things work there, and we have two experts in the field, and so to give us a fresh pair of eyes of, maybe there's ways we could do our DPW services even better. So this will be sort of a joint effort of keeping the ship afloat and taking another look at how we operate. So appreciate both of you being here. Any questions or comments at council? Welcome. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
I move to approve.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Move one of those.
For hours per hour, break period not to exceed 90 days to provide interim director of public works for the city's operating board with permanently filling the director of public works.
Second.
Moved by Piana, seconded by Martin. Now, is there any final discussion or comments? Thanks. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. Gentlemen, welcome to Ferndale. Appreciate it. Our next item of business is a consideration of an employment contract with the chief of police, Timothy Collins. Madam city manager, do you want to introduce that item?
I do. What you have before you is the employment contract for Chief Collins, who has been the chief of police for, how many years have you been? Oh, that's just the two? I'm sorry. It's been for two years. It expires, it just did expire on August 23rd. About two years ago, we moved both chiefs to a contract agreement. As things were changing within the environment here, as well as the charter changes, we, in an effort to try to keep some solid leadership, we moved into a contract relationship with them. That contract was only good for two years, and now it's time to reinstitute another two-year contract, just like we did with the union contracts. There was not much given, no wage increase, anything like that. They much, very much mirrored some of the changes that we made with the, with the other contracts. So with that, I owe them both an evaluation that I'm currently working through right now, but I don't want to hold up their contract with that. So pending an assumption of a positive evaluation, I would like to ask that we approve another two-year contract for chief of police Timothy Collins.
Yeah, we'll think about it. Questions of April, before we have a motion and discussion?
We could have him sing for supper.
Yes. I think we haven't had a formal review process for department heads, and I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about how that you see progressing at the finalization of this contract.
Absolutely. One of the things that I'm working through right now is how we're going to evaluate, and I am not, it's a, evaluations are a difficult thing because they're very subjective sometimes. So what I actually look at is more of a narrative form of an evaluation rather than exceeds, meets, expectations. So what we'll be focusing on is what accomplishments were made, and this is for all of the department heads, not just for the two chiefs of police, but what have you accomplished this year? What do you, what were the strengths that you presented to the organization, as well as what opportunities are there for growth? What areas do we need to improve on, as well as what is our plan of action for the next fiscal year? And so with that, we'll be taking into consideration their own personal goals that they have for their department or the departmental goals, as well as organization, the goals of the city in general, taking into consideration any of the goals that we made with council, as well as this last year, for the first time, we did an employee survey that Jenny and I in HR are working through, and how we can integrate that into their goals as well as to address some of those things. So very much focused on what we've accomplished, what are we still missing, and what are we going to look for in the future? So I hope to have those completed by the end of the month of September.
Other questions? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
I would move that we execute the attached employment contract for police chief Timothy Collins effective August 23, 2012, through August 23, 2014, pending a satisfactory performance review as submitted by the city manager.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Now, comments, questions?
The only question I would have is with paragraph 38. It looks like he's signing up for annual pay of less than $100. I think there's a comma or a period where there should be a comma.
Shh.
Actually, there wasn't.
Is that a friendly amendment?
If you could make that change.
We had to convert that from the Doby's word. Sorry, missed that.
Any other comments or questions?
Just want to say, I think you've done a great job, and I have no doubt you'll have an awesome performance review with the city manager, and thanks for serving as our
I would echo that. I think we're very fortunate with the chief that we have. I appreciate his willingness to take the same raise as other employees are taking, which is none, and it doesn't preclude that if the city wins the lottery in the next two years, we can increase that, but chief, welcome aboard for two more years. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. That contract is adopted. Next regular agenda is item D, consideration of an employment contract with the fire chief, Kevin Sullivan.
Very similar story, in fact, exactly the same, if you will. Same thing as well, we'll be doing an evaluation on him as well, and again, another two-year contract. I wouldn't have brought either one of them forward had I not felt that they would be an asset to this organization over the next two years, and ask the same that we approve the fire chief Kevin Sullivan for another two years, again, taking no wage increases. I did add in both of their contracts, though, that by council resolution, if we were ever to offer an increase, that we could go ahead and do that without reopening the contract. For instance, if we were to give other, as our financial situation changes or that discussion, that we would be able to do that. But with that, for these next two years, I do ask for approval for fire chief Kevin Sullivan.
Questions? Or a motion?
I move to execute the attached employment contract for fire chief Kevin Sullivan effective August 23 through August 23, 2012, through August 23, 2014, pending a satisfactory performance review as submitted by the city manager.
Support?
Moved by Piana, supported by Galloway. Comments? Comments? Questions on this item?
I want to say he's doing a fine job too.
Yeah.
Really pleased with the progress that he's making.
I would echo that as well. And I was, and you know, I was flipping about winning the lottery. We're not going to do that, obviously. I will be serious, we can't continue to pay no increases indefinitely and so I want to say that even though we're not in a position to offer increases this year, and I don't know when we will be, hopefully, I want to prepare the residents that at some point we're going to dip in and give employees a raise eventually because it's not fair to continue to ask them to do all the things that they do. So, the thing about the lottery, we're not waiting for the lottery to do that. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That contract is.
Again, thank you. They've been both a valuable asset to our team and I continue, I look forward to continuing working with them for the next two years.
Well, both of them are doing more with less.
Yes, absolutely.
Most departments who do a fine job.
Thank you.
Then our next item of business would be E, consideration of the Elster Water Meters Contract Amendment, and this has been here before as well, but you, city manager, I know you wanted to, you and the city attorney have been working on the final language, so we're ready with that, I presume?
Okay, yes. I just want to give another overview of why this is back before us and I did notice an error in my report that one of the issues, and I'll explain that in just a second. The major issue is that we received a new program to help us automatically read our water meters. So, the water meters themselves are working as they should. The issue that we're having is that the radio feeds are not working at a hundred percent capacity. Elster, we're typically in a situation with like this, but like a ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent automatic read, which means that the radio automatically reads how much water has been used. But what's happened is that they're only getting an eighty percent read, which I put in our thing, in my report, eighty percent of the meters are being read manually, I meant automatically. So, there's this twenty percent that seems to be hit or miss that needs to go out where handheld, like we used to, where the water meter, we would have to go out and read it and the whole point of the system was to allow us to have all of the meters read automatically. So, with that.
But your point is all the meters are being read?
Yes.
It's just the twenty percent are being read manually and that shouldn't be?
Yes, correct, correct, correct. So, the, in order for this product and this project to work, they need to be reading at, again, minimum of ninety-eight percent are reading through the automatic feed. So, with that, Elster has been working to try to figure out the ways to fix this issue and have finally come to the conclusion that the system that we have in place, for some reason, is just not able to read at that capacity. So, what we, what they have agreed to is that this new system is much more robust, it's a higher frequency, it's a quicker read and it's a much stronger program, that they are paying for the upgrade and that they will be taking on all the responsibility and the liability of changing out the, I'm calling them radio feeds, it's a much simpler way. I'm sure there's very technical terms for that. But it's important to know, especially for residents that are watching, they will not have to go back in the home like they did before. Again, the water meters are working, it's the reading mechanism that they're using is the hit or miss. And so, that's what's being replaced, which will be outside of the home. So, in most instances, they will not have to go into the home to replace that. So, with that, they have agreed to pay for the upgrade of the equipment, the increased frequency, getting the license from the FCC, taking control of all of that and with this contract allows us to move forward with that project. The reason we needed some more time is we just had a few more items to clean up and make sure that we were comfortable with and both city attorney Chris and I feel comfortable with the contract and are ready and prepared to move forward, as is our DPW department is prepared to help in any way to move this project along.
Could you or maybe Dan just give us a brief synopsis of the parts that you were focused in on in terms of the changes in the contract or?
We saw the original.
Yeah, your honor, I don't think it was necessarily in my, it wasn't changes with respect to the proposed amendment, it was issues associated with the status of the department as it related to the performance of those meters that needed to be sorted out and those issues had to be resolved prior to a recommendation that council consider this First Amendment.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right, questions of April or Dan on this? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
I would move that we authorize the execution of the contract amendment with Elster AMCO Water to replace the current Evolution AMI system with the Meganet AMI system.
Support?
Moved by Martin, supported by Galloway. Questions, comments on this item? We've been through this one a number of times, so I'm not surprised. All right, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Our final regular agenda item is former consent agenda item 6H and that is the water main replacement program and councilwoman, Mayor Protem Piana, you pulled that item.
Yes, I pulled this mostly just for more clarity on the background of how we've got to these expenditures. I also thought almost a half a million dollars being approved on consent agenda was a little high. So, these look like very worthy projects. We have main breaks, water main breaks. I was just wondering though, were these planned? I mean, are these, were these emergencies that we're fixing or were these planned in our fiscal budget to have it? Because it seemed like one was an emergency fix and the other one was more so of demand for, higher demand for water pressure for businesses.
Yes, they have been in the budget, but they did get bumped up. A lot of it was due to the fielding water main. It currently is, that section is currently not in use right now. It's all shut off with dead end lines where they tie in right there. And then, obviously, the Bonner water main with the high usage of water down in that industry area, that got pushed forward as well. I don't know all the details on that, but I do know that it got pushed forward, trying to increase the flowing pressure down in that area.
Okay.
One of the, when the water main and fielding broke, it was unrepaired or, you know, the road was in a state of disrepair for several months and then was recently fixed and new curbs and road installed. I assume that's all going to be torn out again.
The majority, the water main's actually going to be going in a different location. It will be in the road. A lot of that was repaired just because it had been so long. It's a big, you know, a fairly big project to just do an emergency repair on and at this point, the pipe was in such bad shape that they made a repair and as soon as they did that, you know, they just kept chasing it and it was determined that the whole water main should be replaced.
So, will that require the removal of fielding down there, you know, between that, those two sections?
There will be probably about a six foot wide trench, including pavement removal that will need to be removed. It's actually going to be more on the south side of the street versus the ridge on the north side.
And when, will that start?
That is, it's scheduled to start, it was scheduled to start in the middle of September. This got pushed from the agenda two weeks. This was originally anticipated to be on two weeks ago, but obviously, we're here now, so we're looking at probably late September start.
And I see the things for the sidewalk repairs are coming out and the curb cuts are being made or commits into the, cuts into the cement.
Correct.
Is this all going to be coordinated with that so we're not installing new, you know, curbs and then cutting them out again immediately?
Yes, all of that has been taken into account. You know, there are some along that stretch that we are going to remove and replace under the sidewalk program, but there are also some that aren't going to be taken care of under the sidewalk program because there will be disturbances in that area from the water main project. So, those are kind of included in the water main project.
Okay, great.
Any other questions of council? If not, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve the low bid of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven of FTL Construction to replace the water main on Bonner from Nine Mile South and looping on Saratoga from Bonner to Faro and on fielding between Liverneway and Kensington and to charge the expense to the Water Sewer Fund.
Support?
Moved by Piana, supported by Galloway. Any other questions or discussion on this item? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Next item would be call to council. Why don't we start with our, not new chief, but our new two-year-up chief, Chief Collins?
Forward, Lord Collins.
All right, thank you. Chief Sullivan, anything for the good of the community this evening? Look at you on your iPad over there. Wow.
Moving on up. Techie. We had an incident over on Wanda this afternoon early where forty thousand bolt lines pole caught fire and snapped off and dropped into the two forty-eight hundred bolt lines, which started to create a major backfeed to the system, which was threatening to blow our power station that we know powers most of the side of the city and that part of Hazel Park. So, we had quite a mess going and thanks to the DPS, we had crews over there and we were able to block all the streets because this was going to turn into a rather large, messy domino effect quickly. We had a DTE guy come in for a different call and was able to call in to the engineers and say, this is the big old stuff and it's going to be very problematic. So, DTE had a crew out there. They're still out there as far as I know. They did resume flicking the power back on, Station Two came back up and most of the east side, but they are leaving some out while they make serious repairs to that pole and get it back online. So, everything worked really well and DTE was extremely responsive, but if they had not been, it would have been in a very big and costly mess on their end of the stick. So, we did have problem with civilians, so I'd like to say at this time, when there are signs up that say road closed, that means don't drive over the grass and around and down there. And then, when we yell at them, and I probably used some expletives, I'm not supposed to, but they parked right under the wires that are falling. So, as I'm saying, move your car, move your car, I must have been a little too intimidating as they stayed in their car and I said, please move your car before you're killed. And they went, oh, it's above me. Oh, I wonder why the road was closed. Yeah, well, we hadn't got the memo out yet, but next time you see the sign, stay on that side of it. So, there were a few people who challenged my blood pressure, but that's what we're there for, to challenge our blood pressure.
You're not going to make it the next two years, are you?
Yeah, I don't know. There were four people that challenged my blood pressure high today, but anyway, everybody was safe. It worked out well and the businesses were appreciative because we found a way to cut out a gate and a fence and let them exit without having to come under the unsafe wiring. So, that was today's big hit. Other than that, everything else is going good. The SERC team was initiated and used for Dream Cruise and it went very well and I'm very proud to say there was no incidents, but we didn't expect any because Dream Cruise always goes well with the police department and DPS and fire. We always have a pretty good cruise, but this was an excellent one and the SERCs did a very good job, so we're very happy with it.
They were very visible and very helpful, yeah. It was nice to see them out there.
So, we're almost completely up and running. Still a few more to train, but we're getting there.
Okay.
And thank you for my contract.
Thank you for your service. Keep that blood pressure under check, please. Derek, got anything from Community and Economic Development this evening?
Just a couple of things real quick. I want to make council aware, tomorrow afternoon, there will be a pre-proposal meeting for the Woodward Avenue Action Association's Complete Streets Grant. We offer to allow them to use the auditorium to allow any of the interested contractors or consultants to meet here and ask any questions they might have about the proposal. So, that is moving forward and our field is on the street and we expect to see responses to that very soon. We did send out special land use notices. Both of the city's Taco Bells, the one on Woodward and the one on Nine Mile, have site plans in and are proposing to raise the entire site and rebuild in both locations. So, those plans are in and they'll be seen in front of the planning commission, I would imagine, within the next month or two, but we did spend, send out the special land use request, so you may see some questions on that.
Yeah, not at the same time.
I don't know the staging of the.
The McDonald's is done. The McDonald's is done. No, I'm aware.
You may want to lay in some supplies for the winner.
They take that two bathrooms.
So, but those will be in the paper, so we anticipate some people having questions. So, if they do, don't hesitate to contact our department. And the last thing is, we were very happy, we were able to issue a certificate of occupancy for our Capital Tire in the old court furniture building. They've moved in and completely renovated almost the entire ninety thousand square feet in that building and have been very pleased with the building so far. We're very pleased to have them. Mostly, it'll be used as warehousing. It will house their regional office operations. They did construct about ten to twelve thousand square feet of new office within the building and if you've been by the building, it's on Academy. It looks absolutely fantastic compared to what it looked like before. So, we're very pleased to have them and welcome them to the community and I would expect you to hear a little bit more from them very soon. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Derek. Jane Marie, anything else from your perspective this evening? All right, thank you. We've got a full house here. Jill is from Rec Department, anything going on there? Joe, I'm getting to you, Joe. We've got a lot of J employees now, don't we? Like half the staff starts with J.
We do. Just have a couple of quick announcements, have two upcoming events coming up at the end of September, Saturday, September 29th. At the Kulik Center from ten to two, we'll be having our mom-to-mom sale. This is a great opportunity to clean out your kids' closets, toy boxes, basements and anything of the sort, like garages. If anyone's interested in becoming, reserving a table at the mom-to-mom sale, applications are available at the Kulik Center and they will be posted on our website, fertilerecreation.org.
You don't have to be a mom to participate.
You don't have to be a mom to participate. We also just wanted everyone to save the date, coming up on Saturday, October 13th. We are once again partnering with the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce to bring to you the Hilton Fall Festival. The event is from ten to five and it will be between Camborne and Mapledale activities. We're still finalizing schedule of events with pony rides, hay rides, carnival games, costume contests, entertainment. So, sure to be a good time and we invite all of you to come.
Always is. Sponsored by Garden Fresh this year, right?
Yep. Garden Fresh is our presenting sponsor this year.
Thanks, Jo. Any questions to Jo? Thanks, Jo, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jo, anything you'd like to discuss this evening?
I'm your partner.
Jenny, I don't want to forget you back there, another J.
Yes.
We're good.
I just wanted to extend a thank you to council for support of our wellness program as we talked about at our last meeting. We're three people shy as of today for enrollment in Weight Watchers and we'll be getting that on September 5th. So, for all the employees that are interested, we are offering an incentive as a reimbursement for the program if they participate and complete it in full. So, I just thank you for your support.
Right. So, you can't go to Taco Bell when you're on that program?
Yeah, the pressure is there.
All right, city clerk, anything for the good of the.
I'd like to build a little bit on what former council member Kate Baker talked about earlier. This is the first November that you will see school board candidates on the ballot. In previous years, they have been in a May election and state legislation changed so that now they're on the November ballot. And Ms. Baker is correct, it is a long ballot, a two-sided ballot. There will be more information on the city's website about what offices are on the ballot as well as a lot of other election information that I'm trying to get out there to folks. But I also wanted to make clear that it's not just Ferndale Public Schools that have a race for school board. Part of Ferndale is in the Hazel Park School District and they also have a race for their school board. Precincts one through five in Ferndale are in the Ferndale Public School District and precincts six and seven are in the Hazel Park District. The city, or the clerks of Ferndale, Hazel Park, Oak Park, Royal Oak Township and Pleasant Ridge are hosting a candidate orientation here at Ferndale City Hall, Thursday, September 6th at 6:30. We've invited all 12 candidates for those two races to go over, you know, what our offices can offer them in terms of information, what state and local campaign rules there are, what they can expect from election night, and that sort of thing. We've held it here before for council members and library board candidates, and Councilmember Piana suggested it would be great to offer the school board candidates as well. So, that's it. Everyone's invited to attend, by the way, it's another opportunity to learn more about the election process here in Michigan.
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. City manager, anything else for the good of the cause tonight?
I do, I do. I have a couple of things, actually. One thing I wanted to, I just found out today, I know that there's been an increasing frustration with DTE that, that this community and our neighbors have been experiencing, and I was just given word today that apparently, everybody's phone calls and emails and letters have worked, because the Michigan Public Service Commission requested an audience for DTE to talk about the concerns that they're having, not only with our community and our, and our neighbors, but some other communities in southeast Michigan that, that don't even border us, that are having those issues. So, they have requested to meet with DTE to talk about what exactly it is that they're planning to do to address these concerns. So, as I know more, I will continue to keep people posted, but I have been encouraging our residents to, when they call and express their frustration, as they have every reason to do that, to, I do encourage them to reach out to the MPSC as well. So, if you have any residents that you know that are still having issues, we do encourage them to write a letter to them, as well as our representative, who Ellen Colton-Libson has been very dedicated, and I think really helped this process along with that particular issue. So, more to come on that, but I'll keep you all posted. Another issue that I think has been very important to this community is, I have an update on Polar Environmental and their request for a permit. Polar has been working with MDQ to look at getting a permit for the work that they're doing in their plant, and with that required them to submit quite a few reports, process, procedure, and things of that nature. Before MDQ was open to facilitating that project, they want to have what's called the public hearing, public comment period. And this public comment period is a time for MDQ to make sure that all concerns have been voiced as it relates to Polar. So, with that, that public comment period has been, started just this last Friday on August 24th, and will go all the way through September 27th, ending with an opportunity for public comment. So, bear with me as I talk about this process briefly. Anybody who is interested in, in talking about their concerns or voicing their concerns regarding Polar, they can do that in many ways. They can mail a letter, and there'll be information on our website at City Hall that we will have available, as well as them working on a press release to, to ensure that people have that information. So, they can mail their concerns, they can also go on to the MDQ's website and email through the website their concerns, and they can also come to public comment, and that is going to be on September 27th. It will be at the Ferndale High School. MDQ was gracious enough, knowing the concerns of Ferndale, to not make everybody travel to Lansing, and they chose to have this public hearing right here in our community, which will really allow people the opportunity to come and voice their concerns. From 6 to 7 that evening will be information on the permit that Polar has requested, and from 7 to 9 will be the opportunity for public comment. Again, this opportunity for folks who would like to come and talk about the concerns that they have regarding this permit. So, with that, we encourage anybody who's interested to please either mail, email, or come and speak on behalf of their concerns as it relates to Polar Environmental. And again, there'll be more on our website, we'll ensure that it's on our Facebook, and there will be copies of the plan at City Hall by tomorrow afternoon.
Great, appreciate it, thank you. Dan Criss, anything from your perspective this evening?
Very briefly, Your Honor, the city manager had forwarded to me a communication regarding complaint regarding signage that was placed on a house in the city, and the particular message on the house, I am preparing a response that I'll have completed into the city manager for possible response to this particular complaint. City's sign ordinance is, in my opinion, content neutral and, and appropriate regulation, it does not appear that the particular applicant was in compliance with the sign ordinance, so I will have that to her tomorrow.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
All right, great. Councilman Martin?
I just have a couple of things. One, I was hoping the city manager could update a request I had a couple of weeks back on doing some research around our policies in relation to water, our processing and servicing and fees related to that as such, just started to express concern about this back in the budget, and we've, we've had discussions since, so I was just curious if you could update us as where we're at in that process.
Yep, the city manager staff has been working to create a survey, if you will, of trying to capture all of the things that we're trying to analyze as it relates to our particular water billing procedures, and shut-off notices, and rates, and things of that nature. So, we believe that we have our survey completed, and we're going to be sending that out. We're actually working through a consortium that a lot of our communities in Michigan are part of, that will allow us to use them as a vehicle for benchmarking, so we're going to be able to take those communities and get their information, as well as looking at the surrounding communities that are part of SACRA. We are hoping to have that information and create a report that kind of shows what I would consider best practices, what seems to be the commonalities, and where we are within that. So, the survey, actually, we just finished, when I say finished, making sure we had all the information we wanted, actually, today, and it's hoping, we will be sending it out on Wednesday, and hoping to get that back by the middle of the month, and hopefully by October 1st, have some kind of report to council about where we're, where we are at with the findings, with some recommendations that we can take a look at as it relates to, to some of the water concerns that we have.
Great, thank you, I appreciate all the work you guys are doing. Secondly, I just want to add earlier to my thanks to the chiefs, and it was really kind of a privilege to be able to vote on their contracts, especially as a, not only a resident, but as a new council member, as you guys have been fantastic in putting up with my stupid questions as I'm trying to learn more, and I just want to thank you guys for your service, and I'm really glad you'll be around at least another two years. Lastly, I just want to wish everyone a happy Labor Day, and, you know, the labor movements contributed a lot to us here, and it's, it's right, I think, that we celebrate it in all, all working people, and a good chance to relax and celebrate with our families, so be safe, and, what's that?
Blue collar.
Blue collar.
And you got a blue collar on tonight, so we'll let you go next.
I have nothing I want to wish everybody a safe and happy Labor Day. I do have one thing, though, April, is when these new water meters are installed, and if there's a big decrease in the water bills, are you prepared for that?
Yes, the water meters are fine, it's the reading mechanism.
Reading mechanism, well, we'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem, Piana, anything this evening?
I would just wanted to follow up the city manager on a request I had a couple months ago, too, on where we are with our foreclosures and possible resurrecting the, the task force, the housing task force, so if you could get back to us on the progress on that?
We're currently working on that data, as well as, we're meeting with vacant property, what's it, consortium, tomorrow at 4 o'clock, to kind of see how other, in the meantime, while we're gathering that data, how other communities are addressing vacant properties as well, so, excellent.
Other than that, have a great summer, and kids are starting to go back to school already, I hear, so have fun getting ready for school. That's it. Short, short for me tonight, I know.
Councilman Galloway?
On that note, shop local if you can for your school supplies, and clothes, and shoes, and all that. This is Councilwoman Piana in my second meeting today. We met with a team of designers for the website and branding of Ferndale, and I think when that, those designs get released, and the updates get put forth in the public, people are going to be very excited. It's a very fresh, new look for a city that hasn't updated its logo in generations, so look for that sometime in the fall.
Great, look forward to that. Couple of quick things from me, I just want to give a quick shout-out to one of my favorite Ferndale business women, Jackie Smith, she was actually Ferndalian of the Year a few years ago, she's been on our DDA. Many of you know she owns the Candlewick Shop downtown, she also owns a candle-making factory called Coventry Creations. She celebrated her 20th year in business yesterday, that was a lot of fun, I know, I saw Councilman Martin there. Congratulations, Jackie. And finally, I think you know that the, all the South Oakland County mayors are part of a group called the South Oakland County Mayors Association, and we move, we have monthly dinner meetings, and we move it around the area, and next month, Ferndale is going to be hosting, and when the host community does that, all the council is invited, so I, I want to just formally invite my council to come on and join with me and the mayors and city managers of our neighboring communities on Wednesday, September the 12th, at 6:00 PM, location TBD.
Well, it won't be Taco Bell, though, there is...
And on that, meeting adjourned.